Good evening, everyone. Tonight is the Town Council Special Meeting, February 18th, 2020. There's only one item on tonight's agenda, it'd be the presentation of the budgets. So at this point Carl will address those budgets.
Hey, picking up where we left off from the other night. We'll start with the San maintenance, which is not much of a maintenance area, but more a salary concentration account that carries all the custodial positions for the town. So you've got a combination of full-time and part-time custodians and their overtime rate associated with that. The difference between the current fiscal year and the proposed fiscal year is really more shaking out of positions with attempt to concentrate all activities of maintenance under Public Works. So you'll see that there's a previously approved recreation custodian that's been moved from Park and Rec into this account. And when we get to Park and Rec on the 25th, you'll see the corresponding reduction in their part-time account of having the custodian pulled out of their budget and parked into this budget.
Carl, why is there a $10,000 increase on one custodian line? The second one down, it's in the clerical union, goes from 36 to 46.
That should be step increases? I'm not sure how current those wages are off to the side. Won't confirm that.
Does that sound...
It's also, there's increase in hours, so there was a negotiated increase in hours of five hours, so that's going to be also added to it.
Thirty percent jump? Okay, that's it? It's steps and it's adding hours, et cetera?
Yeah. I'll get your confirmation and give that to everybody tomorrow.
All right, thank you.
Next takes us to the Fire Department. So the Fire Department has a small increase going from 335,000 to 337,500. The component to this is a salary line item where we're paying for part of the cost of their administrative bookkeeper EMS function, is picking up the other half of that. Under the utilities line item, or 31,000, that carries natural gas service, which goes to the main station, water at both, there's a propane gas account, and then the wireless devices for phones and iPads. Repairs and maintenance at 163,000 is a combination of maintenance and testing. So you've got custodial supplies and cleaning service for the main station. There's additional expense in there for apparatus checks and equipment checks to make sure that you have safe materials and equipment for volunteers to use. There are line items, including the single largest subset of line items within this is an allocation for fire apparatus repairs. That comprises the majority of the line. And then there's fuel for the fire mode. Under stationary and supplies, it's general office supplies and postage. Other operating is a variety of items. One of the larger areas is departmental physicals, which you're going to want to have with a volunteer or a professional paid fire department. There's also training supplies. Clinton prides itself on having a well-trained volunteer corps, so you've got training programs, training supplies and the like. Personal protective equipment comes out of this line also, as well as some additional insurance line items, which includes liability, but also life insurance and accidental death policies for volunteers.
Well, I kind of have a question there. When you're taking, when you're looking at the average of three years, sometimes when you're allocating numbers to here, that other line on the Fire Department has been over every year. You wouldn't increase this by a little bit more than $900 just to ensure that they have what they need? I mean, every year they've been over what they requested, apparently. Anyway, that's just a commentary. I would wonder if that should be a tad higher.
There's a lot in other operating that fluctuates depending year to year, especially with physicals, the more people that come into the door.
Right, yeah.
Firefighters or EMS, so it's very unpredictable. It's how much that's going to cost. We usually cover it within internal transfers from the other ones if we anticipate it going over.
Okay.
I would leave it where it is, and I mean, if it comes up where we're $900 over at the end of the year, I'm sure we can come back.
Well, if it's good for you guys, that's fine. Okay.
Next takes us to Fire Marshal. So, largest line item in the Fire Marshal's budget is the part-time salary for the Fire Marshal. There's other smaller line items for general supplies, which is personal protective equipment. Other equipment is a desire for digital camera and SD cards and a respirator, which helps with sort of exposed to similar environments as the building official, except when there's an investigation of a fire. And there's some additional costs, requests for training and dues associated with the NFPA. There's not really much of a modification from the request to the manager's recommended other than a change to the other equipment line item to pull it down by $200. An area you might want to think about, as at least it relates to this department, would be adopting an ordinance, creating fees for the Fire Marshal's service, which like the building official collects a certain amount of fees, there is a regular book of business that the Fire Marshal does from an inspection perspective. With an ordinance, you have the opportunity to levy an additional fee. It's not going to be a huge moneymaker, but at least it provides the concept of the individual user offsetting the cost of the service. Next takes us to Communications, dispatch function for the town. Large percentage of this budget is tied up with personnel and contractual expenses under the collective bargaining agreement with the union. So you've got the wages as the largest line item. So you've got, as we said the other night, the only cost in here is the step increase, not a general wage increase. Followed by that is part-time. There are part-timers that supplement the full-timers, so there's a budget allocation for what that part-time salary would look like going into the next year. Overtime, the collective bargaining agreement builds in automatic overtime opportunities based on how the schedule is structured, something that likely should be a topic of future negotiations. You can see that the line item has been kind of all over the place based on expenditures. The $70,000 that was provided last fiscal year is insufficient and likely would require, is likely going to require a transfer this year in order to supplement the line to make sure that there's sufficient funding. So that's why you see the number going up, going into the 2021 fiscal year. The chief was recommending taking it up to 106. I shaved that number, looking at, once you remove the aberration for the 18, 19 year, trying to come up with what looks like a normal overtime expenditure rate. Holiday pay is the next line. This is a function of the collective bargaining agreement, as is the clothing allowance. So once we get down to training, we start to get out of the collective bargaining agreement driving the expenditures for this particular budget. But training is an area where state mandates kick in, and we have to make sure that folks are trained on various protocols for how they're supposed to collect information and providing additional instructions via dispatch. There's a reduction in the amount from what the chief requested to what I'm proposing, again, to look at what the historical spend rate has been. If you go out to 16, 17, and 17, 18, you've got years there where you've had full staffing and partial staffing, so I'm comfortable with having a smaller number there for training than where, what the chief had proposed. The next largest line item within dispatch is service contracts. So you're paying for the dispatch system here and our communications equipment to broadcast what instructions need to be given. There's cell tower rentals involved in this. It's really the whole backbone of what the dispatch function is. It's all through service contracts. Rounding out the budget is, my item is perhaps less descriptive, it would really be more radio repair, not as much siren repair. So this would be repairs to any of the equipment. General supplies, again, it's more of that office supply line item. And then other equipment is anything that happens to be required. To round out the dispatch center, it requires 24/7 operations, so there are expenses associated with running a small office area 24/7 with staff rotating through. I'm not sure you have enough in the $1,000 to replace one of their chairs, but there's enough to address other needs for the dispatch function. Questions on the Communications?
It would be worth, I don't know if the council is interested in the evaluation that was done on the staffing levels? And we looked into the opportunities of adding an additional full-time or adding an additional part-time and whether or not that made any significant dent in the overtime costs and then also the impacts to fundamentals as well. And the police department did a very thorough job of looking at those opportunities. And at the time, Sue was working closely with them on that. They determined that it didn't make sense to expand the department to make up for that overtime at the time. So I don't know if Carl, you're going to delve into that more?
I did raise that with the chief during our one-on-one, so it's part of a conversation we already had. The part-time function really isn't going to work because your bidding opportunities go for full-timers first. So again, you've got some more rules that are not really helping you control your expenses and then try to figure out what the delta would be to add an additional full-timer and is that really going to offset your overtime expense when you've got this known scheduling sequence that's going to create five overtime opportunities on a fairly frequent basis? So it's sort of a, doesn't really make sense one way or the other. So we had a conversation to that extent. I'm not proposing upping the head count in order to offset the overtime expense. Once the chief gets adequate staffing, adequate response team, then you've got your, you have what you have. You're going to have to tackle the fundamental issue during collective bargaining. You're not going to address it through tweaking the budget with one person. You have something that requires significant negotiations. Police Department's the next budget. So much like communications, personnel expense is really the single largest driver here. So the full-time line item is paying for your patrol function. Part-timers are crossing guards and the like. Overtime, see, this is a hefty number. You've got overtime that's going to naturally occur based on people taking vacation, people off sick and utilizing their respective leaves. So in order to make sure you have adequate staffing, you're going to always have overtime situations that are going to pull in. You could also have overtime if a particular case bleeds over into the next shift while one officer handles closing out his particular case. You'll notice that I have reduced the number from what the chief proposed. He added in at 270. I trimmed that to 258, again, looking at sort of the historical expenditure of overtime, trying to bend it down to what looked like a more typical expense rate for them to do to my item. Longevity is a function of the collective bargaining agreement, so it's a payment that's made to employees based on their years of service with the town. Holiday pay is another area which is driven by the collective bargaining agreement. There's a higher differential if an individual has to work on holiday. Other employee benefits, education, this is driven also by the collective bargaining agreement. Clothing allowance, again, by the collective bargaining agreement. Training opportunities is to provide, making sure we've got our folks up to scratch on what the current mandates are, requirements coming out of the State of Connecticut for patrolmen. Recruitment costs, so we've got an expense here that's higher than what you've had in the past. There are, as you know, we've had one individual retire from the department, which sets in motion a series of promotions of folks moving up into position and ultimately will result in a patrolman opportunity. So this provides funding to get us through that selection process to get another officer and keep the department completely staffed. So it's higher than what you've seen in the past because we're bringing in, going through the process to bring in or recruit. Service contracts, again, this goes back to providing additional funding to maintain equipment and technology at the department. So you've got an additional expense in here for the police information network and this is a relationship we have with the state, trans-union, the fingerprinting service and the software scheduling, scheduling software program. Next is vehicle maintenance. That is one, you know, the name adequately describes what it is. You're moving your fleet over from Dodge Chargers to Ford, lack of better word, Explorer. I know there's a different name for it, but it looks like Explorer. So this pays for maintaining those vehicles. The Fords seem to have a better maintenance record than the Dodges. They also seem to be less costly to repair than the Dodges. But until you squeeze the Dodges out of the fleet, the number's not going to deviate all that much. Next is repair for radar and sirens. So you're going to want to make sure that on a regular basis, you've got calibration to your radar systems so that if you do issue a ticket based on using the radar, you want to make sure that it sticks. One of the ways the ticket sticks is by making sure that it's been properly calibrated and also paying for repairs to your equipment so you don't have what I guess was the prior practice of sirens and other things breaking and not working the way they should have. Communication devices is a line item that was taken out of the budget. It's picked up under the IT line that we went over the other night. General supplies is an office supply line item, and you can see there's a historical basis for the number that's in there. The next line item is diesel. This is for the police's building supplies.
It's really gasoline?
Gas.
No, no, but it's gasoline.
I think that's the...
How much is it?
A bunch of oil, it's for...
Next line item is other supplies for investigation. You'll notice there's a reduction in there from what the chief requested, what's been recommended. So the amount that's been recommended is in there to provide for crime scene processing supplies. Supplies come out of the regional crime van and other, I don't want you to see a sign type equipment, but kind of get the gist of it. There was a request in here for an alternate light source, which would have expanded what the investigatory skills are of the police department without having to rely on another municipality to deliver their kit. It's out of the budget because the chief is going to have some drug forfeiture money coming in, so you can acquire it without having to run it through the town budget. Make the bad guys pay for it as opposed to the taxpayers. Next is uniforms. So this is, has an increase in it driven by new hire coming in. It's a $1,000 increase between the prior year and what you're looking forward to next year. Other equipment deals with the upper vests of the department. They do age out, so there's a certain life cycle to them before they stop being beneficial. You have to have a regular replacement program, just like you have to do with vehicles and other types of personal protective equipment. So this is providing replacement listed vests. Commission expenses are at 500. K-9 program is additional funding for the canine dog. There's some significant community investments which are mated with the 2500 that's in the line item. You're mainly paying for animal upkeep and a small amount for veterinary bills. Other expenses are picked up outside of the budget through community donations. Other items, armory. The largest expense here is ammunition, so this is both service ammunition and training ammunition. Officers do practice shooting, and they practice shooting with regular service ammunition, which delivers some risk management benefits to the town, making sure that there isn't a delta between the two types of ammunition. You also have additional holsters and any equipment repair that needs to be done with the tasers, which is a non, it's a less violent way of apprehending people. The taser is likely going to be used more often than a service revolver. Prisoner costs, this would be the unhappy meal that we provide those that stay at the police department overnight.
It's a little excessive.
And marine support is additional cost associated with the police boat. So this would be winterizing the boat and any repairs as needed to keep it in service. There's no questions on the police department. Next up is animal control. So animal control, if you do not know, we have a joint facility in Clinton where dogs from Westbrook and Madison come and stay at our hotel, but each town maintains its own individual animal control function. So looking at this budget, the, again, the largest expense is going to be associated with employees. So you have the cost of the municipal animal control officer under the full-time line. The part-time line includes payment for part-timers who supplement the Mako in terms of responding and taking care of Clinton's dogs in our regional shelter. There's overtime expense associated with the full-time office, municipal animal control officer. Professional services is for veterinarian. Particularly, this would be the case if the animal that needs to be put down. You can see the historical spend rate of this particular line, so 900 is in there as a, what I'd say is probably a comfortable amount based on how the line's been used in the past. So I guess the good news is people have a tendency to collect their dogs, so that would certainly be helpful. Next, the line item is training, so there's a reduction there, taking it down from what was requested. It's still higher than historical burn rate, but that's under the assumption that one or both part-timers will want to stop being part-timers. They are senior members of the community and some other folks might want to be brought in, and if they're going to be brought in, they should be trained on how to support the Mako. General supplies and uniforms, so it's office supply expense reduced to reflect his history and then uniforms for the turnout gear that Mako arrives in. You'll see that we've zeroed out the other regional dog facility line, so there's an agreement between the three towns for funding to be provided and a small reserve account to exist to maintain the facility. There's sufficient funding in that reserve account, so we've fulfilled the pledge of what the intergovernmental agreement requires, so there would only be the need to start restoring funding once that pot of cash burns down significantly. So there have been contributions that have come in from Westbrook, there are contributions that come in from Madison, and contributions that come in from Clinton. So we're phasing that out, and Addison and Clinton will also be phasing it out of their Next takes us to civil preparedness. I'm not sure that's the invoked term anymore for homeland security. So you've got a stipend here providing funding for the emergency management director and an assumption of that there'll be some deputies to assist the EMD in doing his duties, so there's a, it's level funded from the year prior at 7,500. Funding has been provided for training and general supplies. Training would be any expense associated with additional emergency management training for either the EMD or support from the deputy. General supplies, in this particular case, is tied to opening a shelter. There isn't really much history associated with what the expense is going to be for a shelter or length of time we should really be realistically budgeting for. So you've got last year's experience and then tweaking that number down going into 2021 to get to some, something that's more of a reasonable number of what we should anticipate for, what could be our exposure of having to open a shelter, and what resources we would have to fund before you start having regional resources stepping in to provide support. It also assumes that it's going to be operating a Clinton-based shelter rather than directing traffic up to a regional shelter. There's no questions under civil preparedness. Last for the evening is Public Works. So again, majority of the expense in this particular budget is tied to salaries and personnel, so you have the full-time line item providing for our usual Public Works response. There's a small amount associated with part-time. Overtime is based on a historical utilization rate. Not every, every year is going to be like this year for snow response, but... So your overtime is broken up between your general overtime, overtime associated with fields, and overtime associated with snow and ice removal. They're all based on a five-year rolling average of what the town's utilization has been for the need for Public Works to come in for additional duty outside of their normal work hours. Travel expense, so like we went over it last time, it's now being populated back out into individual departmental budgets, so this would be travel. The DPW clerk shuttles between Public Works and Town Hall, but also making bank runs. The DPW clerk shuttles between public works and town hall, but also making bank runs. So there is some expense associated with mileage reimbursement. Clothing allowance is a function of the collective bargaining agreement and a requirement under the union contract. Snow plowing and sanding at $45,000 is your sand and salt for storm response. So this year, clearly, we're having extraordinarily warm or late winter, where we're not utilizing it as heavy as we have in the past. I'm not sure what you want to use as a budget benchmark, whether it's a farmer's albanak or woolly caterpillars. But you can see historically that this has been about the right amount of money each year for plowing and sanding. The salt shed will be restocked and be full going in -- coming out of this fiscal year going into the next fiscal year so that we're fully stocked for next winter. Next line item is repairs and maintenance. So again, public works is taking care of more than just our roads, so... Repairs and maintenance in this particular account is paid for town facilities with the consolidation of repairs and maintenance into one particular budget. So you're paying for work done at the fields with lining the fields, lining the fields, and prepping those playing surfaces. There's additional work that's done on the individual streets. There's streetlight maintenance, and catch base and cleaning is sort of the general usual standard that you expect out of a public works department. Town hall building maintenance is a separate line item. It's my understanding there's a covenant with the dollars that were provided to support to build this building, that the town spent at least in that amount of money to fulfill the trust to build the building. Every year, we obviously spend more than that to maintain this facility. And there's a specific earmark to comply with the trust covenant that we're spending at least that $15,000 to repair and maintain this particular building. Town buildings and facilities, you can see, is significantly larger. So this is public works, making sure that we're on top of all of the needs of our different buildings, providing for alarm protection. So all of the alarms are under one contract. There is a reduction in this line and a reduction under repairs and maintenance. So when we get to the 25th and look at other government general, a line item has been created to concentrate all the expenses associated with carrying costs for the Pearson School so that at least from budget management perspective, if there's a disposition to the building, that line item comes out, we don't have to go in and pull it out of everybody's line. So while public works will charge against that line for costs associated with the building, they'll want it to be polluting the normal expense of what public work has to do for the general buildings.
What line did you say that was in?
It's in other general government.
Oh, oh, okay.
So we'll be going over that on the 25th. Landfill costs, there's an increase to this line item coming from MIRA. They increased the tip fee by $10 a ton for waste coming out of our transfer station. I guess the good side of it is that the transfer station has limited utilization. This is 400 customers of the transfer station, so that increase pretty much addresses what the increase was for what came out of MIRA, what the future trajectory is going to be over the tip fee coming out of MIRA. Their desire is to get it up to 140 a ton. So that's a steep curve that's going to have to be addressed one way or the other with either the state stepping in to address some of MIRA's issues through funding or issuing debt for them or some significant change in how solid waste is handled. General supplies, it is what it is. Diesel is more the central fueling point for everyone, so this is the expense associated with the public works component of fuel. Safety management is personal protective equipment and safety training. You can see that the dollar amount has been reduced from what was requested, but it's in line with what the historical spend rate has been in the department. And then other equipment is other items that are needed to support public works. You can see historically, the number has fluctuated significantly. So this is providing similar funding to what you've had in the past, but trying to acknowledge that this is a fluctuating line item. Questions? If there's no questions on public works? No, good. That is it for this. All right. We have another batch to do on the 20th. Our board adds.
Thank you, Carl.
Any indication as to when there's going to come this inclusion on MIRA?
At this point, no. So MIRA has distributed its plan and its desires for what they want to see as the tip fee. The tip fee is to support a capital project to redo the burn plant in Hartford. It's been an issue for a long time, so it really should be a revelation at this point, but there it is. So MIRA's ideas are if the state steps in, if the state were to issue general obligation bonds in order to pay for the cost of the project rather than MIRA having to issue its own bonds and then finance it through the tip fee, that that could then be expensed lower. There's other notions of diverting things out of the waste stream, but you need an infrastructure around that. So when -- before MIRA, it was CRA, and you had put-or-pay agreements, which helped finance the projects. So if you're going to do something that diverts waste out of the waste stream, you're going to have similar put-or-pay agreements to help finance some other diversionary system. And I guess the current thought process is that single-stream recycling didn't work and that we need to go back to different buckets for different things in order to get more of the commodity value. Apparently, there's some recyclables have a commodity value, but it has to come out of all the other waste, which, I guess, right now is economically infeasible.
Is that because of the cost or just in general?
Just in general. Apparently, there's a market for some type of the glass, but you got to extract it from everything else that's there. And they know there's no infrastructure to support that separation.
And it's clear glass. The other issue is cardboard's not worth it anymore because now you're mixing it in with the glass and the plastic, which is liquid always left in it, which contaminates the cardboard and nobody wants it. So we're looking to separate all that.
Food waste is something that was thrown out, but you've required additional state legislation to force the issue, create a market. And once you create a market with put-or-pay agreements, then the expectation is the private sector will then step in and build plants that will pre-process food waste into some kind of mess that works in these plants that convert it into energy. And that would be a new infrastructure beyond the CRA, MIRA, transfer stations that are spread out of our state.
That's long-term.
Anybody else? No, good. Motion to adjourn?
Sold.
Second? On favor?
Aye.
Close?
I just think so.